We are going to start the special meeting of the Finance and Claims Committee. For today, Thursday, February 20th, 2020, at 7:54 PM. Present, we have Councilmember Satchinelli, Councilmember Theoretis, Councilmember Burnett, Councilmember Hume, and Councilmember Keegan. Item three on the agenda is discussion on the recommended operating budget cap. And we have Mr. Dakwitz here to assist us in this discussion as we move through the recommendation. What we handed out to you, shared with you, is where we're at right now, which has a recommended total expenditure of minus the intergovernmental grants estimated, which is $16,866,170, which would bring us to a cap of $368,763,931. That would equate to an increase on the city departments of 4.8% or in dollars, $8.1 million. And an increase to the Board of Ed, current spending at 5%, which equates to $9.9 million. The overall increase to the budget, operating budget, would be 4.92% or $18 million. This would equate to an average tax increase of $329 citywide across the various six taxing districts, which would be an overall increase of 4.65%. So at this point, I'll pause to see if there are any questions of the committee.
The eight million dollar draw from the general fund puts us again, refresh my memory, at what's the percentage then that it puts us at?
After the eight million projected for fiscal year 21, the ratio of the unrestricted fund balance, known as the rainy day fund, to the total operating expenses would be under 15%. What is it, 14? 14.5%.
14.5, okay.
Which is in the bandwidth of the city policy of having that ratio between 7.5% and 15%.
Where does that put us in relation to the debt obligation issue? That I believe was something that Greg had mentioned to me. The drawing down more money from the general fund would put us in... What position would it put us, I guess, at that point?
Well, there are interrelationships between the items on our balance sheet, the fund balance, our debt, and the statement of operations, which is our revenues, expenses, and surplus or deficit every year. What the rating agencies look at most is the total amount of debt compared to the grant list, as well as the ratio of the debt service to the whole operating expenses. The fund balance is viewed as a cushion, and they look at it twofold. One, in an absolute sense, that it allows us to pay for contingencies. So you could have a catastrophe. You could have a financial catastrophe such as the loss of a major employer. You could have a casualty loss beyond the cost of the insurance. The mayor has talked about a school that burned down. You have damages, let's say, from a natural disaster, Hurricane Sandy, which could affect a diminishment of our revenues, as well as increased expenses. So you have a fund for that. The second way they look at it is that, as I've read about the articles in the press about how other cities and towns are coping, it's hard to build up a fund balance. It means that you had not only enough revenues, primarily taxes, that covered all your expenses, but you had additional funds left over that were not spent and are piling up as a cushion. So when you have something of the order of 14.5%, it says, "We are comfortably covering all of our current expenses, and we also have a cushion for eventualities for contingency." So they view that very favorably. I think, in general, my preference is to use the fund balance for those disasters that we know happen from time to time, but I can't tell you in advance what they will be, or to pay down our long-term debt. So we have obligations, as most governments do, for pensions and what's known as OPEB. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, primarily healthcare or health insurance for our retired employees. There is a challenge for most governments throughout the country with those liabilities. What has happened is promises were made, commitments were made, which were up here. The funding necessary to satisfy them were below what was required, and the amount of the liability kept growing. Government accounting required comparisons and tracking of what are the assets set aside and available for those long-term liabilities compared to those liabilities. So we are doing very well compared to other governments. The assets we have set aside to cover the pension is around 80% of our obligations. Okay? There are states and counties that are at the 20% level, whether it's Chicago, Cook County, State of California, State of Illinois. On the OPEB, we have a segregated fund, which is dedicated to pay those liabilities. We're at about 50%. Based on my discussions with our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, as well as rating agencies, there are numerous localities that have 0% set aside, and they may be as low as 10 or 20%. So we're doing better relatively, but when you pay down the debt, you just don't have that liability. So when you have excess funds, it seems appropriate to me to take those long-term funds and pay off your long-term liabilities. So that would be one of the areas I would target if, in the future, we have excess rainy day fund.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, yes.
So I'm going to say a lot and then ask a question, if that's okay. So I'd like to fully fund the Board of Ed, but the challenge is we have had some recent items come to light that is kind of conflicting, right? So ultimately, we've heard stories that we have kindergarten classes that don't have paras. But we've also heard about stories of gift cards and trips that may be defined as unnecessary or maybe even frivolous. I'm also getting a bit of these anecdotal information over the past, since we've opened this budget cycle, of what is appearing to be, and again, anecdotal, an overweight central office. People are telling me stories of six-figure salary positions where they don't even know what these people do in central office. So in fully funding, the concept of fully funding, is the fully funded Board of Ed an $18 million number, or is it some lesser number? Right? And the question that I'm having from leading into here is, last year, we allocate an additional $1 million at the end of the budget year. We're going in with a $10 million proposal here. The Board of Ed last year said that we could fund their strategic budget with $5 million coming into this year. So we're already $5 million over their initial ask, so I have questions. With these items that have come to light as of late, the questions around these line items that we typically are not allowed to ask, I would like to say that fully funding is a lesser figure until we have proof of responsible spending. Right? So I would like to theorize a concept of reducing this to $5 million upon some level of receipt of proof of responsibility or anything, record of responsible... I don't know what it'll be, right? Maybe it'll be an audit, something else. We've done these things before. And then, upon review of that, if none of these frivolous items are in there, then maybe at that time, we allocate the additional funds, and maybe more, maybe beyond the $9.9, the $10 million in here. Right? But I think it's a hard decision to make with all of these topics that have been brought to our attention within the past two, three weeks. Right? So it's a new concept, it's something, and the question is, what would that look like? If we allocated a lesser amount than what you're proposing, wait a month, two months, three months, until we have some receipt of some type of validation, and then we propose the additional, whatever it might be?
If I can clarify, so is your train of thought to... As opposed to the $9.9 million, that number would be $5 million?
Yeah, so I think we need to cover their increases, for sure. And ultimately, that's what they asked for at the end of last year's budget cycle. They had a five-year strategic plan, and the remainder of that five-year strategic plan was $5 million. I was on that council, I committed to that, right? So I want to meet those terms. I definitely want to fully fund the Board of Ed. It's an investment in the community in total. But there's this whole dynamic of what is responsible spending, what's going on with that money. We can't necessarily get involved in the line items, I get that. But I'd also like to know that we're not giving out gift cards just because they have budget availability and they're not providing a para to a kindergarten class, right? So there's just, there's some dynamic here where we need to have some levels of checks and balances. Because we can only control the cap, I would like to control the cap.
Well, I mean, the Board of Ed's request was $18 million.
Oh, yeah.
Five is $13 million off.
Their request last year was, for this year, was $5 million. And then they came in this year at $18 million. So I see where we're coming with, and if it ends up being $18 million, maybe we have to find that money, right, ultimately? But my proposal is, we find that money after we have proof that these line items are responsible line items.
Well, I think what we're faced with right now is, by charter, we have to set the cap by next Tuesday. I don't know if we're going to get the data that you're requesting.
That's my question. So if we set the cap and reduce this to $5 million, and then in three months, decide we want to revisit this, as we did last year, right, to address the need, is that something that we can do?
Well, we use the cap and the approved budget to set the mill rates and the taxes, to make sure that we collect enough taxes to balance the budget. If I hear you correctly, you're saying, "I would give them $5 million now, but I want to have a reserve of $5 million, so if they demonstrate responsible spending in the manner you're referring to, then later on, we give them the $5 million." It would seem to me, I don't know if it's done before, but we would have to set a mill rate, assuming we're spending the $10 million, and have those funds in reserve. Because if we don't set the mill rate for the $10 million, after they spend the $5 million, where is the additional $5 million coming from? So I'm not sure about the implementation.
If we didn't draw down the rainy day fund, the general fund, by that $5 million, could that be the $5 million? Would that then maintain the same mill rate that you have in here?
Well, we need that drawdown.
We only put down $3 million.
We need that drawdown now to balance the budget. So if you're saying, "Give the Board of Ed $5 million less, draw down $3 million, we would be balanced. And then if you choose to pay that additional $5 million, then we can draw down the additional $5 million." That would give us the flexibility, yes.
It's a different take at this. We haven't done this in the past.
Very different take.
Yeah, I'm... My concern, I mean, I follow your line of thinking. My concern is, X number of months from now, what type of information would we want to see to satisfy our need to say, "Yes, give the additional $5 million"? I just don't know what that would look like. I don't know what pieces of data we would want to see so that we can have the confidence to say, "We support how spending is being done with the Board of Education." I'm of the opinion that giving the $9.9 now and continuing to have dialogue on how those dollars will be spent across the nine priorities, and what can we look forward to funding in the next budget cycle and phase in those priorities, with the presence of the new superintendent, might be a more cost-effective way of continuing to show the full support to the Board of Ed and their initiatives. I just don't know, what is it that we would want to see in X number of months from now that would merit, "Okay, we're going to give the other $5 million"?
So I think we would propose an audit, and maybe the city even funds the audit, because it's something that's being proposed by us and we're looking for line item control. Maybe it's something else, maybe it's some type of study, third-party study. I mean, I guess that's up for discussion. But I've been on, this is my third council, this is my fifth year of doing this. I've been involved in these discussions, and these conversations end the same way. So I think, and again, I think the goal is, we do want to support the Board of Ed. We do want to fully fund them, but I also think there needs to be some level of controls. And our responsibility, our station in this, is to control the taxes for all of the residents, right? So it's an investment in the community, we need to invest in the community, but there also needs to be some level of control. So we've gone through these conversations year after year, and this, last year, it was $5 million, it was $5 million coming into this year. You were part of that conversation. Now it's $18 million on the table, right? So, and a lot of the people that are uncomfortable speaking, I hear all the parents, right? And it's important, all the things that they're saying is, we need these things. But we're also, I'm hearing from teachers who are not comfortable speaking against the Board of Ed, which I understand why, that there's these redundant roles in central office. There's reams of paper in closets that they can't even account for because it was a user-to-loser budget, right? So I think we're challenged and we'll look inward. And ultimately, maybe we find $5 million, maybe we find $20 million. I think at some point, we need to control what we can control, which is the cap.
I would just point out that the mayor proposed funding a study performed by efficiency experts with experience in both government operations and school operations to come in, to analyze the operations of both sides of the city, to find efficiencies, to find opportunities to improve cost savings. And maybe that would give you some comfort, where they say, "Here's the $200 million or the $203 million with a $5 million increase that's being spent wisely and appropriately that you agree with, and that might allow you to get comfortable to release the other funds."
Thoughts?
I think I was vocal about it.
Yeah, I know the mayor has indicated that that audit of the entire budget, which includes both the city side as well as the Board of Ed, to find financial efficiencies in the budget is something that we would definitely like to move forward with. Obviously, we would need commitment and approval on both sides, both the Board of Ed and the city. But I think as we make the decision in front of us right now, that's work that's to be determined. And there's no guarantee, at this point, as we make this decision, that that will occur. I think we have the commitment on the city side, obviously, because the mayor's bringing it forward, but it's yet to be heard if the Board of Ed will have an appetite for that type of review. I mean, that's where we stand right now.
I think the parents deserve what they're asking for, right? And I think it's our responsibility to provide it to them. But there's too many questions that are floating. There's a lot of things, honestly, I feel a little foolish about proving what I've approved in years past without challenging it, and these things come to light, right? To just be completely transparent with the committee, right, and I guess the public. So that's my proposal.
I see your point, and you have a historical reference, because you've sat on these councils that has approved these increases. And I completely understand where you're coming from on that. I don't feel comfortable going below what the mayor has recommended right now in this. But I also would love to see the schools get everything. But I agree with you that some level of study, some level of looking at the efficiency of how we spend money on both sides is needed. And I think it's needed now more than ever because of this constant, every year, these increases that keep coming up. And last year, with the cycle being told that this was the last ask of this nature, and now we're in a cycle where the ask is astronomical. It's a huge difference. And so how can we hold both sides feet to the fire to have a study like that done? And that's the question that is perplexing me right now, without doing what you're proposing to do.
Well, and in addressing that, I'm not challenging the mayor's proposal or what we have presented. I'm just challenging how we disperse it, right? So ultimately, I would say, I would ultimately want to give them as much as needed, right? The understanding here is, we find that $10 million may suffice, it may ultimately be more, right? I'm suggesting that we hold the $5 million until we have some of what is being proposed, until we have something that's a little bit more tangible. And to speak to some of my years past, we toyed with the idea of a memorandum of understanding, some contractual documentation of, "This is what we require, this is our strategic plan, this is how we're going to achieve it, and this is how we're spending the money," right? It was never agreed to, all right? And again, we're in a situation where all we have control over is the cap. We need to leverage what we have control over. And in this instance, I feel like $10 million is unnecessary at this time. I think we need $5 million so they can move forward with what they're doing. And then, as we identify where there might be redundancies, I think there's definitely efficiencies to be found that we have not looked for, have not asked for, and that's on us. And I think we should, maybe we'll give them the $5, maybe we'll give them $6, maybe we'll give them $7, maybe it'll be $2, maybe it'll be nothing, maybe we find $20 million under the carpet, right? But we don't know. And I think we need to leverage the authority we have. We will ultimately be giving them the $10 million if everything's, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, et cetera, et cetera.
We set the cap, we don't allocate the cap.
We can't allocate, that's... But we also are responsible, our station is to protect the residents, right? And by us not challenging it, we're not protecting the residents.
Absolutely, fiscal responsibility, I understand, I understand that.
Are any other comments, questions?
Just listening to what Nick is saying, very novel idea. And I think all you're asking for, and I think we're all in agreement, is some accountability for a large part of the budget of the City of Norwalk is for the Norwalk Public Schools. And Nick is correct. I have my own children in the schools. And yeah, we want to fully fund the Norwalk Public Schools and give them everything they need to properly educate all of our kids. But at some point, we have to take a look at how much is being spent, where it's being spent. And I do think that we have an obligation to the taxpayers to say, "Look, we're doing our due diligence. We are setting the cap on the budget, but we are making sure that all the money that's being spent is being spent properly." And I think that's a good thing for us to be doing. That's just how I feel.
Okay, with that, I will read the resolution as crafted and call for a vote of the recommendation on the cap that will then go forward to the full board next Tuesday on the 25th. I think that will give us the opportunity to further discuss your recommendation. And if there is a need to change this recommendation, we would be able to do that next Tuesday. If, in fact, between now and then, we were able to come up with some kind of parameters as to, again, what, if we held back, quote-unquote, "held back" that $5 million, under what criteria would we say, "Now, we will give the $5 million"? I think that's the piece that's not known right now. What set of data points would satisfy members of the committee, the entire council, to say, "Yes, we've seen spending in the proper manner, and now the additional $5 million will come forward"? Yes?
Can we ask him? Is that something that we have already theorized, that what those data points might be? Or has that been discussed?
It hasn't been discussed, to my knowledge, because I've been told the city side, through you, sets the cap, and others decide how it's spent. So I'll point out that the deficiencies, lack of supplies or the lack of things that the teachers have now, is not in the requested increase. It's part of the baked-in $198.5 million approved budget from last year, which is the minimum. So the increase is for all these new programs. Are they willing to commit to rectify deficiencies that you've identified that's in the core budget? And so that's why connecting the two, the giving of the money with some sort of accountability process, is important. But I guess, according to law, they can say no. So I think it's new ground. I think you're on the right track of, we want to support them, but we want to make sure the spending is going in the efficient way, appropriate way. And the question is, how do you find a mechanism? The other thing I'd point out is, so you're talking about giving them $5 million out of the $10 million. It doesn't mean that January, halfway through, is when they get the next $5 million. We're talking about $203 million versus $203 million. We're talking about 203 million versus 208. So the 203 are good for 11 months. So we're talking about seeing how they spend the money during a nice period of time. So I just would point out, it's not like we only have a six-month window. And if you could get a memorandum of understanding, or if you have some sort of commitment, I think we should be able to fashion some sort of mechanism that allows you to be satisfied that they're spending the funds the way you would like.
With that in light, I'm not necessarily in favor of voting on this.
Well, we, well, I mean, we have to vote on it tonight. We have to bring forward a recommendation. So, I mean, if you personally choose not to support it, that's your prerogative, but we have to have a position tonight in terms of bringing forward a recommendation to the full council next Tuesday.
So can we, I'm sorry, can we vote on it and then modify it or make changes?
Yeah, this is the recommendation from the Finance and Claims Committee. That's what we're voting on tonight. The recommendation in terms of what we bring forward, this will be what we bring forward to the full council next Tuesday. The change would have to come with the full council if they choose to change this committee's recommendation.
So we'll vote on this as a procedural matter, with the understanding that we will be looking into some of these recommendations when potential process, checkpoints, controls in advance of Tuesdays. But I do want to remind the committee that if this moves forward with a 10 million increase, and it's 203 to 2...
198 to 208.
That is what we're going to be giving in perpetuity. So if we put these checks and balances in place and they find $20 million or $50 million, and again, I'm using, just pulling numbers from the air, I have no idea, but if they find $20 million, the increase that we're giving this year will always be there, even if the efficiencies are found, all right? So it would be a mistake to put the cart before the horse in this dynamic. So that...
So with that, whereas Section 1, yes?
I mean, that puts us in an untenable position, to make a vote like this. If we're having this, I mean...
But let me explain. We have to bring forward a recommendation. Now, you can vote it up or down, that's your prerogative. But we have to bring forward a recommendation now in order to bring forward to the full council. So we can't delay this.
Okay.
I mean, that's what it is. But if you choose not to vote for, fine. I mean, if we vote it down, then we don't have a recommendation to bring to the full council. And now, we have to make a decision by charter by next Tuesday. So some decision has to be made, either now or next Tuesday. And it's the responsibility of the Finance Claims Committee to bring forward a recommendation. So with that, whereas Section 1-289 of the NOR Charter requires that a majority of the common council vote to establish a specific spending limit on locally funded expenditures during the process of establishing the next fiscal year's operating budget, now and therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Norwalk, that the maximum limit on total appropriations for the City of Norwalk for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, shall be no more than $368,763,931. This appropriation cap represents total expenditures of $385,630,101, less estimated into governmental grants of $16,866,170. Be further resolved that the result of this vote and resolution, together with the attached 2020-2021 budget guide, be forwarded by the Clerk of the City of Norwalk to the Board of Estimate and Taxation. There is no motion?
I'm going to move this as a matter of procedure.
We have a motion. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor show by the sign of a "i". All those opposed have the same right? Any abstentions? So we have... Or actually, well, 2 in favor, 2 opposed, and 1 abstention. That in the... Actually, I'm... Where are we at? Actually, procedurally, I'm not sure where that stands. It's 2, 2 and 1.
I'll change my vote to no, so there's no tie here.
You changing your vote to no?
Yes.
All right, so that means it's voted down. So that means at the current point, we do not have a recommendation to bring forward to the common council as presented. Is there an alternate resolution to bring forward to the full council?
I'll put forward the resolution to move forward with the $5 million with a, I don't know what the language would be, audit, proof, record of responsible spending? I don't know what the language would be there. What's the, what is the process that we might be putting forward?
I think what we're talking about is that, at a certain point during the year, you want the public school Board of Education to demonstrate something about their spending in a responsible way or the way that you feel is appropriate. And then, at that time, you would release those additional funds that you're referring to. So it's some contingency.
Well, the recommendation speaks to the specific numbers, not to the mechanism in terms of the spirit of what you're talking about. So, again, I ask, as an alternate recommendation, what are the numbers that you're offering? $5 million less than the 9.9 million? And keeping the, excuse me, and keeping the, keeping the...
We should have the language.
The overall cap the same?
There should be, the cap should remain the same, and there should be, there should be language of our intent. Speaking personally, ultimately, I want to make sure that the board is fully funded. That's the challenge here. I'm asking for controls.
Well, councilman, the concern is, when you say "fully funded", their request for, to be fully funded was $18 million.
That's a recommendation, right? So we're trying to define what fully funded really is. Maybe fully funded is less than the 5 million we're providing, once we find, once we ascertain if there's efficiencies, so...
And that's not, that's not a piece of information we're going to have any time too soon.
Well, so within the year. So we'll put the languages within the year.
I'm lost right now in terms of what you're asking.
Procedurally, how you tie that linguist, what the intent is to the, to the motion?
Right now, our responsibilities is to set the cap. I don't, we're not in the position to set stipulations in terms of what data we receive from the Board of Ed and what data we don't receive from the Board of Ed. So if your suggestion, in the form of a motion, would be reducing the 9.9 million recommendation to 5 million, and we keep the total cap expenditure at the number it is, essentially, that's moving 5 million to the city side.
Is that how we would be handling this?
I'm not sure I heard the whole thing. Here's a thought. This cap that we're discussing would fund 9.9 million of an increase to the Board of Ed, partially funded by the $8 million drawdown from the fund balance. What we could do, if I hear your intent, is to lower the cap by 5 million, so we're giving the Board of Ed 5 million instead of the 9.9. And correspondingly, the way it would be funded is that instead of drawing down the 8 million, we draw down the 3 million. And then during the year, if you feel you would like to release $5 million for the Board of Ed, that could be done as a special appropriation and addressed at that time. So I understand.
However...
Yep.
What this, if we change the budget cap number, that's going to have an effect on the mil rate?
No, because the drawdown, the drawdown from fund balance reduces the amount that we require from the mil rate. So if we spend less, giving the Board of Ed 5 million less, and we draw down less, the mil rate would be the same. And what I'm suggesting is, the drawdown from the fund balance can be held in reserve. And if at an appropriate time in the future, you decide you'd like to draw down that fund balance to replenish those funds because you saw the indications of responsible spending, then through a special appropriation, we could draw down that additional 5, which was the original 8, give them the additional 5 million, which is the 10 million we're considering now. So up to 8 million, we will not affect the mil rate.
So what happens when we find that the efficiencies are there and the $18 million would actually be appropriate? That it's not, it's not an additional 5, it needs to be an additional 10?
I think we should take it to heart, ultimately, right?
But at that point, we're going to draw a 10, we would be drawing 10 out of the fund.
But we don't know. I mean, every decision we're making is on that whole what-if dynamic, right? So either we throw more money at it now and never find out, or we ask the question.
My experience with operations reviews of a similar nature is that, let's say it takes six months to complete the study and make the recommendations, then the parties have to start implementing change. The consultants estimate that, let's say there's a save of $5 million per year. My feeling is, don't expect those saves in fiscal year '21. If they get implemented by the time fiscal year '22 begins, you can count on that and adjust it then. I think counting on those saves in this fiscal year is hard to do, because they may not materialize. You're not even going to get a full year of the implementation.
I understand, I understand that. Here's the, here's what I'm struggling with this as well, that it's, to speak to the parent who spoke about the aides in the classroom. If we only, if we only fund, going into this year, the obligations at 5 million, with the written understanding that the additional money would come when we see this efficiency from this study and we figure out where we're at. But they're going to start the year with huge cuts, which, that I'm not comfortable with. So I, I mean, we're in unchartered territory here, but the point being is that I don't know that that, that necessarily is the way, because it's going, the cuts are going to be immediate for them going into the year. Yes, I think the efficiency study is something that needs to be done, and I think it needs to be done across all departments of the city. I think it's just smart, it's smart practice, period. But I, and I understand where you're coming from, a feeling that you have done this year and year, where you're not seeing that efficiency, but I don't know what the answer is right at the moment.
But there shouldn't be cuts. The $5 million should cover their increases as what they've proposed. So, and from what he's saying is...
Well, I don't think that's 100% correct. I mean, there were five, nine different priorities, and if I recall the numbers, there was 5.6 was just for salaries and benefits, 5.6 million dollars. So, and there were other, there were other priorities, such as ELL, et cetera, which we, we can't pick and choose. We give a total amount, and it's up to the Board of Ed to decide how to use that. However, I think, yeah, I clearly would say $5 million, based upon the nine priorities, is going to create a huge, huge concern. Based upon what has been presented to us in terms of how the nine priorities would be funded.
Can you say something?
No, I just wanted to point that their list of those nine goals totals $14 million, because 4 million of the 18 increase from last year is already baked in and is part of our minimum funding requirement. So it's not like they're getting 0 versus the 5.6. They're getting the 4 million already. I don't know if that helps.
I'm clear about it. Again, I'm struggling with what information that we're going to receive in X month from now to say, yes, the additional 5 million should be brought forward to the Board of Ed. I just don't know what that picture's going to look like. And quite honestly, I think in good faith, this dialogue should occur with the Board of Ed, that we want to move towards this type, getting this type of information. But as we sit here right now, to bring this forward and say, let's hold back $5 million based upon some set of information we're going to get, I just don't see, I just don't see what that's going to look like, or how that's helping anyone at this point.
I agree with you. I think, but the challenge is, we're talking about these potential cuts would be a concern as well. But is it a cut of a necessary position, or is it a cut of gift cards? It's still, it's just, it's a question that's, I just don't know where, I mean, and that's always been our role in it, and that's always been kind of our saving grace, because we go to the public, hey, we have no line item control, we don't have visibility to those things, right? But that's a mistake. I just don't, so, yeah, I agree. So you want to move forward, are you suggesting we move forward as proposed and draft and work with the Board of Ed over the next week to understand what is a reasonable ask here, or what the Board of Ed is willing to work with in terms of some type of record or process or procedure that we're putting in place as a mechanism going forward? But again, any money that, any efficiencies that are found, any increase that we put forward today, it doesn't matter, right? So it's still, now it's just additional funding that we will have to pay in perpetuity. So I say we stop it. We put a control in place, support them in finding those efficiencies, maybe, I would suggest that the city takes on the burden of whatever that cost is to find the efficiencies and have a holistic view of, from a city and a Board of Ed perspective, and align with what they're working towards. And then if we find that there are no efficiencies, truly, we have money put aside for them. we have money put aside for them.
I mean, if... Personally, specifically, I'm in support of the $9.9 million right now. With the understanding, based upon this discussion, which is a very important one, that we have continuing dialogue with the Board of Ed in terms of how... Or actually, the entire operating budget. I'm not just calling out the Board of Ed. I'm saying on both the city side and the Board of Ed that we continue to have dialogue on how we find spending efficiencies on both sides. It's just a piece of data that's not at our disposal as we sit here right now.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not so in favor. And I think it comes from having these conversations year over year. And you're still... And truthfully, I would like to find them more money than what they're asking for, if it needed to go that way, right? But we still have these conversations every year where, I mean, to have teachers reach out and point out... Teachers that live in the city to point out unnecessary spending, I mean, that's eye-opening. Alright? And then, to have some of these other things that we found by accident come up. If we had some document in front of us that we could review that makes sense like we do with everything else, right? Every RFP that comes through, everything that we look through with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that we're doing the right thing, then I could say, "Yes, $16 million increase, $18 million increase. That makes sense to me." Right? I just... We haven't ever had that, and no one... It just feels... I feel foolish from what we've done in the past, and I feel like we just need to stop that cycle. And I feel like this is... And it's not a us versus them. It really shouldn't be. We should continue to work with them. And we should provide them the money that they need. But if we find efficiencies, which would be the goal of this practice, this exercise, then what are we putting that $10 million to? If we find efficiencies and find $20 million, and what does this $10 million go into?
Well, I mean, the $10 million is based upon the request that came from the Board of Ed. They've already indicated to us how they plan to spend, as Henry corrected, $14 million.
In a corporate world, right? You invest in your resources, you invest in your branches, you do what you need to do to make sure that you're supporting the growth. But if you find a branch that has some kind of loss, you question it. You stop investing in it until you identify what that loss is. This is... I mean, why don't we do that? I mean, I feel like it's a fair recommendation. It's a fair request. I think what we put, in terms of the linguistics to move this, what we put into that motion, then, I mean, that's different. This is different for us. We've never tried this. We've never taken this approach. But last year, we ended up putting $1 million in after the fact anyway. So we made all the best decisions based on all the anecdotal and all the recommendations and everything else that was put in front of us at the beginning of the year. Things changed throughout the course of the year, and we invested an additional million anyway. So now, we actually are putting controls in place. So if we need to make an additional investment, we know that it wasn't spent on gift cards leading in. Maybe, right? There wasn't $1 million on gift cards, right? That's not... And I'm probably playing that up a little bit more than it needs to be. But, I mean, truthfully, they came to us asking for $1 million to address this enrollment, but then we find out that they spent the money on gift cards. I just... It's challenging.
I mean, the gift cards was just a very...
It is. It was a small dynamic. The idea is, we don't have visibility to any of this spending.
Let's not get caught up on that. Was... And in my opinion, that was a one-off scenario that shouldn't happen, and hopefully, safeguards are in place so it never happens again. Well, I mean, as we sit here today, right now, the motion as the recommendation that, from the Chief Financial Officer and the Mayor's Office, we just voted down. So, I'm asking again, do we have a subsequent motion in terms of a recommendation for the budget cap? That's the responsibility.
Is there any way to add language to this?
This resolution is as it is.
Well, I think we could draft it based on the recommendation. So, the... We would be reducing this by $5 million, and then adding... Can we put language of intent? Why can't we? So ultimately, from the mechanism that we're putting in place is, if the Board of Ed is willing to move forward with the review process, that we have the money set aside for them. So instead of drawing from the rainy day fund, that will be allocated at a later date, provided that they meet those... These review requirements, along with the city.
How can we move this forward and get this forward the way that it is, though, and get...
That goal.
Get some assurances to have this efficiency? Because, as I said, I... Holding back the $5 million concerns me because of the things that will get cut. Yes, I see your point. If you find $20 million worth of efficiencies in this study, you know, then we're stuck at $208 million for perpetuity. But I think that, based on the way things go, we'd probably catch up to that within five or 10 years. The question that I have is... Speaks to what Mr. Dashwood said earlier, that it's gonna take... If you do an efficiency study, it's gonna take X amount of time. We're not gonna see any of that initially. We're gonna see the fruits of the study and where the efficiencies could be. But we're not gonna realize that for years to come. And yet, we're still, I think, in a position where we're making... Potentially making the schools suffer at this point. And I'm not comfortable, being new on the council, to be in a position to do that right now. So I'm... What I would like to see is a way to bring the Board of Ed and the council together to have this discussion and to have just what you're talking about, to open this up with transparency. I mean, we don't see all of those line items. We don't see that stuff. Yet, I have a city budget here where I see, you know, every... Everything that got spent, so...
Well, I mean, it's...
It's hard to make that decision.
So we're also fully funded. We're looking to fund Dr. Adamowski's recommendation. We are bringing in a new superintendent. By applying these principles and this level of control, maybe we'll help support the new superintendent in their role as well. Why are we assuming that the new superintendent has the same... Same goals?
Fair point.
I just have one...
Yes.
I just don't wanna see the whole budget process get bogged down, because we're talking about the whole city's budget. And Nick makes great points about, you know, wanting that accountability. And I'm wondering if there is some process that we can take into consideration what Nick is advocating for, and that's, you know, just, "Let's see what this money's being spent on. Let's make sure that it's the important things for the kids, for education, and not something, as somebody said, frivolous." But I just don't wanna see... And my... I wanna make sure that the process that we're going through allows the city to continue to operate, you know, with all the money that's needed, the budget. I just... I'm not familiar enough with the process itself. And so that's where I'm looking for guidance. Are we able to do something like this? Is this something that we can do?
Well, I wasn't here, but you were talking about memorandum of understanding and exploring that. And maybe that might be a mechanism whereby there's an agreement on both sides to get what you want, some accountability, and at the same time, they get some confidence that those funds will be released, because they're the ones in control of how they spend the money. And but that way, there's some agreement in place so that both sides make sure that they get what they're looking for.
Can we add the memorandum of understanding and the movement towards this synergy into this resolution? To move it to the council? Or do we need to take it to the council this way and have this discussion openly among the 15 members of the council?
My opinion is that that memorandum of understanding discussion is a separate item to be discussed with the Board of Ed. I don't... For us to say that we will not move forward with a recommendation if... Only if the Board of Ed agrees to sign a MOU, I don't think we're in a position to do that. I think we have expressed a strong interest to have that, to have the study done on the complete budget on both sides. But I don't think we're in a position to hold back $5 million to get an MOU signed. I just don't... I would hope that our... The discussion tonight has shown a strong interest to doing that. I hope that the members of the Board of Ed that are in the audience agree with us that there's a need to look deeper and find efficiencies on both sides, that we could proceed without saying "We're going to hold back $5 million, and nothing's going to be done until we get an MOU signed." I think we're bigger than that, and we should be bigger than that. But we have a responsibility, this committee, to bring forward a resolution recommendation to the full council. And that's where we're at right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, whether you want to decrease the the recommendation that Ms. Councilman Satchinelli is making, is to reduce the $9.9 million percentage of 5% to the Board of Ed to $5 million? Make a resolution. You know, put the numbers in. And that's what we'll bring forward to the full council. But keep in mind, I think we're chartering in some uncharted territory when we say we're going to hold back $5 million until we get an MOU and a set of data points that are unknown at this point as to how the Board of Ed is efficiently spending the dollars that we allocate. I'm not against it. I'm just saying it's some very uncharted territory right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Based on these conversations and based on the... My personal belief that we should be funding our schools to the full extent that we can to give our kids the quality education, I'd like to change my vote to yes and move this forward to the council at this 9.9... 9.8 number for the Board of Ed. I think that it's worthy of a discussion at this point in front of the council. I'd change my vote to yea.
With that being said, I'll ask the recorder to change the vote from nay to yea. Therefore, the resolution as read is approved, and the recommendation will be brought forward to the full council on Tuesday, February 25. Is there any other comments?
I think that the members of the Board of Ed who are in the room tonight, I echo what you said, and I think that we need to come together and solve how this process is done so that we are not put in this position, the position that you guys have been put in for year and year out, and the position we've been put in tonight, and will probably be put in again if we do not find a way to move forward in a unified fashion. That's all there is.
Motion to adjourn. So move. All in favor, show my sign of aye. Means adjourned. Thank you.